Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Pledge allegiance to the-
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in good will, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have to be approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from October 17th as submitted?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. As we discussed before, if you have anything that you want to question or discuss about the CSC or CPSC, we need to take that into executive session because of the manner of it. But if there's no questions, do we have a motion to accept the report as submitted?
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're up to public comment. Thank you, everyone, for coming. How many students do we have? Oh, wow. Okay. For government class, some for- okay, so get your forms signed at the end of the meeting. You're in it for the long haul. The Board of Education welcomes and encourages input from the public at board meetings. Please note that neither the Board nor the administration may engage in a dialogue or respond to questions concerning personnel or student matters. This is not an attempt to restrict public comment but is done to protect the privacy of the individuals involved as required by law. As a matter of courtesy to others in attendance, comments of individuals or groups should be limited to less than three minutes. Does anybody have any public comment? Concerns? I think the majority of everybody knows you, but if you just state your name for the minutes.
Yep, Betsy Droop. And I am an officer for the PTSA group that we have, and I just have minutes from our meeting that we just held. We had our first parent community coffee on Thursday, November 2nd. The high school student council funded the function, and they had a great turnout for the first meeting. They had six parents, three staff members, and a member of the Walton Police Department. And we have set up a cornhole slash volleyball tournament for Saturday, March 10th, from 5:00 to 9:00 here at the high school. We're going to open it to parents, students, staff members, community members. We're going to have a $10 per team entry fee with a free bag of popcorn. We're hoping to have members of the yearbook committee there to take some pictures. Let's see, and Mr. Kanuski is going to mention that in the December newsletter. And we're going to have prizes for first, second, and third places. We're thinking movie theater, Montos, local restaurants. So we're pretty excited about that. And then hopefully in January, we're going to have some students open enrollment for the Leo Club, starting in January. I think that's about it.
Yep, next parent coffee.
Oh, yes, the next parent coffee meeting is December 5th at 5:00. And I think we're going to try to hold it in the library.
December 5th?
Yeah.
Okay.
5:00.
And did you notice any concerns that the public has out there or staff?
Tonight, we didn't have any. I think I didn't go to the first coffee one the other morning. There were some-
They brought some excellent points, and we're actually acting on that now. We've already planned a trip up to Internet Safety. Parents brought-
Oh, that's right, yep, I'm sorry. Yep, I'm going to write it down.
There's a workshop for parents Internet Safety.
Yep.
So we're going to put that together.
So we're working on- do you remember, it was two or three years ago, we had the Internet Safety presentation with the investigator from Homeland Security?
Yes.
So we're trying to connect with them again and bring the presentation here where they did it during the day, and you requested an evening-
Yep.
-presentation as well.
Okay, good. Nice.
Yeah, we're pretty excited. So, good for those who cannot.
And Betsy's also a new member of our community group. She serves on it with us, so. And Grayden's on it, and Marilyn's on it, so.
Yep.
Good.
She's involved a lot.
All right, breaking me out of shell. Well, thank you.
All right, well, thank you.
Yep.
Are there any other public comments? Okay. Does anybody have any discussion items? If not, I would like to thank all the board members that attended our training. That was an all-day event. I thought it went well. And we had a board goals training that was going to be coming up, but we're going to actually move that out, which I think Roger will touch on later. But thank you to Cory for compiling all of our notes. How you made heads or tails, I don't know, but thank you. We've got all that. And, okay, correspondence? Did you have- did you want to touch base on the legislative breakfast?
Ah, I do, it's, yes.
Is that something?
I was going to put that.
Hold that. Okay.
Well, I can, that's fine, I can. It's Saturday, December 3rd, Cory?
2nd.
2nd.
9:30 at Suco.
So if anybody's interested, email Cory. I cannot, unfortunately, that's my class weekend, so I won't be able to attend, but if you contact Cory, she can make the reservations for it.
Right, RSVPs are due this week. Okay, I'll probably be attending then. Anybody else wants to go along?
Got to go with Rhonda.
Okay. Okay, we are up to presentations. We have an independent audit report. Chip Clark from Darkangelo.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Final copies of our report that I'll hand out to you. Thank you. No, not today. Thanks. Sure. Okay. My name is Chip Clark. I'm a partner with Darkangelo and Company and engagement partner on this audit. What you have in front of you is the June 30, 2017 results of our audit. And you have two items in front of you, really two packets in front of you. One is the extra classroom audit, and the other one is the basic financial statements of the district, the audit of the district financials. I'm going to go over both of them. I'll first go over the basic financial statements, which is the thicker packet that you have in front of you, and there should be two letters that are part of that. They're both required communication letters. The first one is titled Required Communication with Board of Education. And this is a pretty standard letter relative to the performance of our audit. Were we able to perform our audit procedures effectively so we could opine on the financial statements? So that's basically what that letter is. And we were. We were able to do our audit procedures, were able to issue an opinion on the financial statements. So a pretty standard letter relative to the performance of the audit. It also outlines any significant estimates. You'll see those in the middle of the page, mainly some GASB requirements, GASB 45, which is post-employment benefits, or your health insurance that's required to be accrued. You'll see compensated absences, which is your sick-in-vacation balances that we receive an estimate on and we accrue. And then depreciation on your full accrual financials, and GASB 68, which is your OPEB benefits, or your pension benefits, I'm sorry. So a pretty standard letter. We are in compliance with all the GASBs on these financial statements. And I'll go over the opinion letter, and I'll go over some of the other findings relative to the audit in the next letter, which is the letter titled Required Communication of Areas in Need of Improvement. And this letter is for any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies that we found as part of our audit procedures, as well as any other best practices that we want to recommend to the district. And there was, if you move to page 2, you'll see there was a significant deficiency this year relative to closing procedures and the monitoring of closing procedures. This basically, you know, is when we came out and did the audit, were all the accounts properly reconciled? They weren't when we came out. So we're recommending here the district implement procedures to properly monitor the closing procedures that you at this district have the boluses to perform a lot of that. So we're looking for better procedures on the closing of the books. So when we come out, all funds and all accounts have been reconciled. Okay? The other matter relative to segregation of duties, this is really a best practice. So what we're looking for here is the documentation of review of certain exception reports that your financial system generates. Because there's segregation of duties in most small school districts, the financial system provides some mitigation of those risks. So here, we're looking for a vendor master exception report. This is if somebody were to add a vendor, change an address of a vendor, or remit to type of address, that would show up on this report. So we're looking for somebody to review the report, not just review it, but document that they reviewed it and maintain it for audit. So when we come in, a control hasn't been performed unless it's documented. And we can listen to, we can, you know, it might be being done, but unless it's documented and available for our review, we really can't rely on it. So in this case, we were told that it is being, that it was being done, but it was not maintained, signed off, and available for audit. So really, that's what we're looking for here, just better documentation of any controls that are being performed. If you're going to do it, document it so it can be audited. Bank wire transfers. Here you have two banks that you can deal with. One, you do receive a callback if a wire transfer has been made, the other one, you don't. And that's big with school districts now. There's been some issues with wire transfers, highly publicized with problems. So here, what we're looking for is you do business with banks that allow for this control to be put in place. So what it is, is when a wire is made, another individual outside of the business office will receive a phone call that the wire has been made, and they authorize it. Okay, so just a secondary control or monitoring of any bank wire transactions that occur. Next page in, unassigned fund balance. Real property tax all limits, school district fund, unassigned fund balance, the 4% of the subsequent year budget. Your fund balance is at 6.2% this year, so slightly over, in my opinion. Not drastically over. This is common with a lot of school districts. Sometimes they're over, sometimes they're a little under. You're over. All this really means is that you got to come up with a plan to utilize this fund balance through budgetary procedures in the future to try to maintain under the 4% limit. So, not a big deal, required to be communicated in this letter because it's a compliance item. But I'll give you my personal opinion, 6.2% is not an acceptable amount to be over the 4% limit. Especially with some lobby uncertainties that happen with school district budgeting. The next page in is required status of prior year findings and recommendations. First here is user access to the financial software. Here, what we're looking for is, again, a documented review of individuals' user access within the financial software. And who has access to what, do they need access to what? That's where your controls are going to lie, is this type of segregation of duties and the documentation of that. Unassigned fund balance, you were slightly over last year. I think you were at 4.2%, so just 0.2% over the 4% limit last year. So you're out of compliance last year as well. Questions on this letter?
Just one.
Sure.
The frequency of the bank wire transfers, you're out of compliance, is there just a relative, is that a weekly thing? Is it monthly? Is it buying or pulling?
Well, a lot of it is payroll-
Okay.
...type transfers. So I would say probably at least two a month, and potentially more. They're not out of compliance.
Right.
It's just, this is a best practice to kind of strengthen the internal control.
Yeah, I just wondered what the scope was of the callback, you know, what's the frequency of it? You're talking, you know, 24 times a year for that callback?
Potentially, you know, it could be more, depending on how wires are done, if there's, you know, shortages in account where you do a wire. But mainly, I think it's going to be payroll-related type transfers.
Ask you another question on that, just, is there a norm of who that callback person goes to?
There's not. They'd like to be out, somebody outside of the business office. You know, obviously, somebody who is really, doesn't work directly with that type of transaction. So if these are payroll-related transactions, then you want somebody out of the payroll department. In this case, it might be Roger, that is that person, somebody who has the ultimate oversight over this. So if your business official is making these transfers, or your treasurer is making these transfers, then somebody outside of that business office really should be the one receiving that phone call.
Thank you.
Next, I'll get right into the actual financial statements, or your thicker bound financials. And we have conference call with the audit committee. Went over these financials in detail. I'm going to provide, you know, summary here of this year's activity. I'll move you to page 1 and 2, which is our opinion letter. And this is what's called an unmodified or clean opinion. The highest level of opinion we can provide on the reliability of the financials. So that's a good thing. We didn't have to qualify the opinion. We're able to, again, perform our audit procedures effectively so we can provide financial statements that can be relied upon. So an unmodified clean opinion. We're also required, because with all school district, required to do an audit in accordance with government auditing standards, that basically requires us to gain an understanding of the internal control environment, test that internal control environment, and provide any information relative to any significant weaknesses or significant deficiencies or material weaknesses, as I just discussed, to give the ones that we discussed. We're also required, because you receive federal monies in excess of $750,000, required to do a compliance audit, in accordance with what they call Uniform Guidance for the Single Audit Act. It requires us to periodically test certain programs that are federally funded. This year, it was the School Lunch Program that we tested. And next year, it might be the Title I Grants or the Special Aid Cluster. It's on a rotation that is, that we follow the guidance on as to what we select. Ends up being roughly 30 to 40% of the expenditures of federal monies that we end up testing. But that was a clean letter relative to compliance and the federal awards. I'll next move you, I'll first note that pages 3 through 11, that was called a management discussion and analysis. This is kind of what is an executive summary that goes over mainly the government-wide financial statements. I'm not going to go over this because I'm actually going to go through the actual financial statements themselves. But this is meant for, you know, a person that doesn't want to, not going to understand some of the actual financial statements, and this gives them a summary of how the district ended up and its net position. I'll move you to page 12 to get right into the actual financials themselves. And this is the statement of net position. Now, this is the full accrual, which is required, a full accrual statement of net position. This is going to include all funds combined. It's going to include your long-term assets and long-term liabilities. So it's going to include your fixed assets, your building, net of accumulated depreciation. It's going to include any long-term debt, such as serial bonds, and then any required GASBs that I'll go over. So this is your full accrual. And then we're also required, which I'll go over in a little bit, the actual fund financial statements, which is your general fund, your school lunch fund, your special aid fund, and whatnot. So this, your full accrual financial, your total assets of $33 million. 73% of that was in capital assets, net of accumulated depreciation. So majority of that is right in your fixed assets, your buildings, your major equipment and whatnot. You'll see you had roughly $2.9 million in cash at the end of the year, and then due from other governments, or that's state aid, that was still due at the end of June, of $1.3 million. Liabilities, total liabilities, 2/3 of the page down, you'll see total liability of $14.5 million of that is what's called an OPEB accrual. It's a GASB requirement to accrue health insurance. It's actuarially determined number. District provides us, they have an actuarial study done every year that provides us with this information, and we're required to book it. So that was roughly 60% of your total liabilities is that accrual. And that's going to go up. I had this discussion with the audit committee, but if they're changing the GASB, that amount, because this is just a portion of the full accrual, next year, we're going to have to book the full accrual. Okay, so that number will get bigger next year. You'll see up above, accrued liabilities of $678,550. That's an amount that is due to the Health Insurance Consortium, due to teachers' retirement system and employee retirement systems of $809,543 and $68,859 respectively, and a net pension liability proportionate share of $1 million. That is what we call it, it's GASB 77. It's a relatively new GASB. It came into effect last year. But that is required, you receive those numbers from the TRS and ERS systems who have audits done every year to comply, and they, and we receive what's called the proportionate share, the district proportionate share of that liability. It's not a true liability of the district. It's really the TRS and ERS liability at New York State in the end, but part of the GASB is that the districts, individual districts, need to book it on their full accrual financial statements. Total net position at the end of the year of $8,306,782. You'll see just up above that, that unrestricted deficit of $9,454,225. That is solely due to the OPEB accrual. Because the OPEB accrual that I discussed, the $14,525, is an unfunded liability. There's no mechanism through New York State for the district to fund that. So these deficits that occur are normal with government entities. Pretty much every school district we do in New York State has that because there is no way to fund it. So if you have a liability with no asset, you have a deficit. Page 13. Stop me if you have a question. I'll answer at any time. Statement of Activities. Total functional program expenses, again, full accrual of $23,515,800, offset by program revenues. Charges for services of $198,137, which is charges in the school lunch fund for adult sales and those types of things. Operating grants and contributions of $1.3 million. That's going to be your federal grants, your state grants. General revenues of $19,477,92. 6.5 million of that is your real property taxes and STAR. 12 point, roughly $12.6 million is your state and federal sources, or your state aid and federal aid. Leaving you with a change in net position on the government-wide of roughly $2.6 million. And again, that also, that deficit is also due to that OPEB accrual that we have to book. So we're booking the expense every year, and there's no offsetting revenue for that. On page 14 is your balance sheet for your governmental funds. And so this is your general fund, school lunch fund, special aid fund, debt service and capital. Focus, most of my attention are here on the general fund. General fund, a total assets of $4 million, 207,590. $2.3 million of that was in cash. Roughly $800,000 was due from other governments, which is your, again, your state, your state aid. Due from other funds of roughly $989,000. Total liabilities of $1,911,184. And total fund balance at the end of the year of $2,296,406. Now, of that, your unassigned fund balance was $1,266,516. And again, that is 6.2% of your subsequent year's budget. Up above that is your assigned fund balance of $731,000. That's made up of 7, roughly $703,000 that you appropriated towards the subsequent year's budget, or the '17, '18 budget, and $28,000 in encumbrances there being rolled over to next year. School lunch fund has a fund balance of $40,000. Debt service fund has a fund balance of $96,450. And the capital fund has a slight deficit of $50,000, mainly due to short-term bond anticipation notes that occur. Once long-term funding occurs on those, that deficit will be eliminated. Page 15 is a reconciliation statement between, again, the full accrual and the fund statements, pretty much what I explained to you, the differences there, the capital assets, the long-term debt, and whatnot. Page 16 is the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance, or your income statement. Total revenues in the general fund of $19.5 million. $6.4 million of that is real property taxes and STAR. $12.5 million is in your state and federal aid. Slight deficit in the general fund of $282,109. School lunch fund, total revenues of $550,000. Total expenditures of $497, so you had surplus in the school lunch fund of $53,585, which is great. See a lot of that. Debt service fund, again, total fund balance at the end of the year of $96,000. So just interest earned in the debt service fund. Page 17 is another reconciliation statement between the government-wide and the fund financial statements. Pages 18 and 19 are your fiduciary statements. These are your scholarships and your trust and agency fiduciary accounts. Pages 20 through 44 are required disclosure. I won't go through these, but these basically are disclosures of, are some of our accounting standards that we're required to follow, as well as some statements that break out certain balances within the financial statements. You know, reserves, that type of thing. So if you haven't gone through those, those notes, you know, they're informative, but I won't go through them just because, you know, it's kind of disgusting items as I go. But you'll see some of the required disclosures that are required due to the GASBs. The new GASBs that are out, GASB 68 and GASB 77 are the biggest ones. Some of those disclosures go on for two or three pages, significant. I'll next move you to page 45. And this is a good statement to see how you, or a good schedule as to how you perform relative to your budget. You see total revenues above the other financing sources of $19,579,33. Actual revenues came in at $19,504,897. So you're, and you'll see your variance there of roughly $66,000, very tight on the revenue side, which is what we see with most school districts, is how they perform relative to the revenue. On the expenditure side, down towards the very bottom, you'll see total expenditures, budgeted, final budget of $20,194,144, and actual expenditures, $19,787,6, and encumbrances of $28,000. Leaving you with a variance on your performance on the expenditure side of $378,494, 1.8%, which is completely within a reasonable expectation as an auditor, as to how this district performed relative to their budget. We do a lot of school districts, so you kind of have an idea of where you should be relative to the budget. And so this is within that reason, or within that reasonableness. I'll next move you to page 52. It's a required letter relative to the district's performance in accordance with government auditing standards. I kind of went through this already. Required to get an understanding of your internal controls, test your internal controls, and document any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. And as I said, there was one relative to the closing procedures. Page 54, again, because you received in excess of $750,000, required to do an audit in accordance with Uniform Guidance. This is the required report relative to that. And this was a clean letter relative to the compliance on the test of the school lunch fund, for school and federal monies that came in. You'll see the breakout of your federal monies on page 56. Total USDA of $374,867. Total USDA of 374,867, total Department of Ed of 699,126, total federal awards of 1,073,993. That's all I have on the basic financial statement. Any questions on that before I get into the extra classroom? The next packet that you have is the extra classroom. This is going to be pretty easy. As with the basic financial statements, there are required communication letters, there is required communication with those charged with governance, we were able to opine on the financial statements, able to perform the audit effectively. So a pretty standard letter relative to the initial communication there on governance. The next letter is required communications of areas in need of improvement, if there's any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, we note those here. Add to all extra classroom funds, there's an inherent risk there, just based on how they operate, you got students collecting monies, the cash, the internal controls over cash receipts aren't going to get to the level that the district has over its cash receipts, just based on how they function. You got ever-changing students coming in, they're meant to be a training tool for students and they're just not going to meet the same level that is required, which is a high level required for a school district to have what was an unmodified opinion. So we qualify our opinion relative to the cash receipts at the point of collection. We do for all school districts, just based on how they function. Next, I'll get into the actual financial statements for the extra classroom fund. Page 1 and 2 is that opinion. As I said, this is what's called a qualified opinion relative to the cash receipt cycle. Not as clean as the unmodified, but still just one notch under that. You know, the worst thing you can get is an adverse opinion, so this is just a qualified opinion. Just means these financial statements are accurate, however, cash receipts have a weakness inherent with how they are collected. So you just...
Do you see other schools do anything different? I mean, when you're talking about sales and sporting events, things like that, being able to match receipts on it, are other districts doing different or are they all getting about the same opinion?
They're all, all of our school districts get the same opinion. It's not so much those, it's really fundraising activity that happens, the candy bar sales, a lot of the cash that goes back and forth just based on how they raise their money.
Okay.
Is that based on the projections and stuff like that are not being done out on it? Or is it just because of receipts? I mean, what...
Well, projections are our best practice to head, to come up with an estimate of what those, of the funds, but it still doesn't mitigate that risk at the point of collection. So that is being done on some of them. Again, there's a lot of clubs, so I don't think they're all doing that, but you know, some of them do projections, so that is something that you want to see. But still, even with that, it doesn't mitigate the risk. You'll see on page 3, cash of 64,603, that includes all your clubs. Page 4, total revenues of 139,342, total expenses of 133,578. And then on page 6, you'll see a breakout of all your clubs and the cash balances for each individual club at the end of the year. Any questions on the extra classroom?
Other than, I mean, giving a receipt to everyone that buys a candy bar, that's kind of difficult to fall within those guidelines.
And these, a lot of these sales are happening, they're not, there's no centralized mechanism for these fundraising activities, they're happening a lot of times off school district premises and you don't know, really, you can't control. Candy bar sales are actually a little bit easier than some of the other fundraising activities that occur, like car washes and that type of thing. Depends on the club. But what we like to see, because again, these are a training tool, that's how they're meant to be a training tool for students. So, you know, we look for education, you know, trainings for the, both the advisors and the students, you know, annually.
Right.
Because there's a training going on, because again, they're really meant to be a training tool for students.
Okay. Any questions? Nobody else had any questions? Thank you, Chip, that was very thorough. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I have a box there that I'm going to bring over here, it's got a transmittal letter.
Okay.
And there's going to be some extra copies in there for anybody that needs it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We're up to virtual reality with Rick Robinson and Crystal Trask, and hopefully they're going to shed some light on these blue things in front of us.
How are they doing?
Hello, hey.
So, my name is Crystal Trask and I work for OCE, but I work for L.A. as an instructional and foundational coordinator. I'm going to give you a little history of these VR sets that we have. When I first came to L.A. and VR was new and I was really excited about it, I was like, we have to get VR, it's going to be the leading thing in education, so excited about it. And I'm talking to Rick and I'm talking to Dr. Reed and they're like, yeah, I think it's going to be really great. What do we need? I was like, well, we just need some cardboard. We need cardboard, rubber bands, some magnets, these things. I'm going to tell you, this is a kit that we bought, okay? It doesn't look fancy, but at the time, I made the original one out of a pizza box. Okay? So when we got these in, I was like, oh my goodness, this is it, I'm so excited for this. The only hiccup with this is that it would require the students to have their own device. And that meant the students would have to have the appropriate hardware, because you have to have a gyroscope in your phone or device, as well as the appropriate software and storage space. And students don't have a lot of storage, filled up with selfies, okay? So then, when I found out that Best Buy paired up with Google to come out with this classroom set, I practically ran down to Rick's office and was like, we have to get these, it's going to be so great, and was begging him. Because this comes with a device, it comes with a viewfinder, it comes with a teacher tablet, a router, so all the teacher has to do is plug that in, have the content downloaded, have these turned on, which I'm going to have you guys do, show you how easy it is, and you're good to go on an adventure. Okay? They've already been used in the classroom. The third graders went to, not went, third graders observed Aurora Borealis a couple weeks ago. The eighth graders took, yes, seventh grader, sorry. The seventh graders took a trip to both the South and North Pole, okay, using the expeditions as a culminating activity to their activity, to their unit. They will be traveling to Mount Everest as an anticipatory set. The art teacher will be using it as an arts and culture and taking some students in the high school to a museum and looking at various architecture across the world. So there's lots of opportunities, the teachers are very excited to use these. And they've been receiving PD. All of the staff was introduced to the VR sets, exactly what you're going to see the opening day. There's been ongoing PD, there's PD this Thursday for them as well. Okay? Did you bring your swimsuits and Smirks? You didn't get the memo. That's okay. It's okay.
And my license is in, right?
Whatever you need, whatever you need, it's fine. So what I need you to do is open up your VR set, okay? And up at the very top, you'll see this longer button with the up-down, and then right next to it, there's a little small button. Just tap that small button, that's the power button, and it's going to wake your screen up, okay? And it should have a flag on it, and then down below, you'll see a flag that says expeditions and cardboard. Yes? Okay. What I would like you to do, I'm going to get my teacher tablet ready.
Thank you.
You will be able to view over here, I have to restart, this is the first time we're casting it, and so what this is allowing is allowing the community members and staff and students to view what the teacher is seeing. So you can also pop out momentarily from your viewing experience to see what the teacher's seeing and how they can use that in the classroom. I have to restart this, so that's what's going on. If you touch the expeditions, does anybody have content that says I accept, or do we all see people going, yay, we're so excited? You have I accept? Go ahead and click I accept, speed read and click that I accept. And then you should have the people looking excited to start an adventure, yeah?
Yes.
All right.
Quick onto this one.
I had a really difficult time picking what we were going to do today, because there's so many different things.
Okay, guys, I'm going to take you on a virtual field trip.
That's me.
That's you, is that you?
I'm here. No, we could do Everest. That's okay. You probably switch to a tutorial, you know. And you're going to stay right there. What we have to do is wait for this one to load up, because I was casting it and it fell asleep, when I went to wake it up, it was flashing, so we just have to restart it and it takes a little bit. Has anybody experienced VR before, virtual reality? Heard of VR? Okay. I will warn you that, let me give you a couple warnings. You can use these with glasses, I have used them with my glasses before, that's fine. If you start experiencing motion sickness, okay, because it is right here in your face, it's okay, you can either pull it away, nobody's making you do this, take a break, or you can open it up and on your screen, not right now, you won't see it, but there'll be the little full screen, like when you watch a video online, the little full screen, you touch that and it'll make it all one screen and then you can hold it and use it. Okay? So when I, when we're ready, you're going to close these up and then you can look up, you can look down, all around, you're in swivel chairs, have fun with those. You cannot move forward or backward, I mean, you can, it's not going to do anything in your viewing experience except for get you to run into things.
These are my drone. I put them on like you and then I'll fly the drone, that's a riot.
Okay. So we all are in the expeditions, yes? And it, does it say follow yet?
Yep.
All right, go ahead and click follow, and we are going to do an underwater excursion. You probably won't see anything yet, as long as you click follow, you'll see the cardboard, close it up.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. You didn't accept.
Perfect. Close it, you're not going to see anything yet because on my teacher tablet...
I'm supposed to hit something else?
Let me cast it over here and maybe you can see what's going on. Okay. So on my teacher tablet, I have a script that I can read with questions. There's specific areas that I can point you to and direct you to that you'll see. You're not going to see anything until I push start, okay? And I'm waiting, because usually when I push start, we put it on and we go, oh my goodness, look at that, that's so cool! And nobody can hear me. So, let me explain. If you look over on the TV, do you see the little people and the number? That tells us how many devices are connected, so that's for the teachers to be aware of. So when they're teaching, they can see, oh, this dropped down to 10, I'm supposed to have 11 connected, somebody's having an issue. I can address that and help them get connected again. Okay, so it's constantly monitoring. And one of the fun things is, when I push start, I want you to go ahead, look around, have fun, but also pull away and then look at the screen, because you'll see these smiley faces darting all around. And those smiley faces are the viewers and where everybody's looking. Okay? Are we ready? We are going to Saunders Reef, Great Barrier Reef in Australia. And I'm just going to read a little bit about it as you're doing this. Okay? You see on the screen right here? And with the teacher, I can, this is what they're seeing, okay? So they can look all around and down and check on your head. There's a fish right there or a crab, is it a fish?
I see fish.
Okay? So it says coral reefs are diverse ecosystems found in tropical waters. They provide food and habitat for thousands of marine species. The reef also protects the mainland from strong waves created by storms. The Great Barrier Reef is one of the largest living structures on Earth. Visible from space, it provides a habitat for thousands of species of invertebrates, fish, reptiles and mammals. Now, with my teacher tablet, you will see an arrow and then a circle. The arrow is directing you to a spot that I want to give you information about. This is about corals. And I can tell you now, corals are comprised of colonies and animals related to sea anemones. Their rock-like appearance comes from the calcium carbonate shell they scrape. Corals filter the water for nutrients provided by algae and other microscopic organisms. Now, I'm going to pause it and you'll see pause. These are much quieter than students. Usually when you hit pause in the classroom, you'd be like, oh, I missed it! But by pausing it, it allows the teacher to re-collect the attention, ask some questions and process the information that they just viewed, okay? Making those connections deeper.
I like the arrow too, because that, like, when you look away, it's like kind of redirecting you, that arrow back to where you're supposed to be looking.
That points to you. What I like about being able to cast it is I'm only allowed to, I'm a teacher, I have a set number of spots that I could direct you to with the arrow, but if I have this displaying on the board, I can say, okay, everybody over here, you see, what's going on down here? You see that fish? And I'm able to zoom in and now I can have us all directed here and we can start examining this and go rogue per se off of this, okay? To build deeper connections. So we're just going to go to a couple other ones. One of the, I really like, which one is it? The Heron Island Great Barrier Reef of Australia. And I like this one because you can see the turtle up close. Isn't it so cute? Okay? And interesting fact, we'll look at the turtle, of the seven existing species of marine turtles, six can be found in the waters of the Great Barrier Reef. Green turtles are the most numerous. This herbivore can reach up to five feet long and weigh as much as 500 pounds. So this is a great way for teachers to continue talking about natural habitats. If they're discussing marine life, they can look at this up close, there's facts here that they can receive, there's questions that can be asked, and it also strikes their imagination, the student imagination. In the third grade class, in Miss Day's class, the students have been so excited and they're saying, can we go here? Can we go there? Like I said, Thursday, I think I said Thursday, they're going to Paris. Yeah, they're going to Paris. And we don't have to worry about mission slips, plane tickets, chaperones, anything like that, okay? So it's very cool. Would you like to go anyplace else? I'm going to pause it. Do you want to go to Mount Everest?
Do you have it?
I have, I'm...
It all better hike it. Might as well see it.
With your bionic knees, come on.
I think the surgeon's with me.
This is a face cam.
Oh, wow.
Oh, wow.
Okay, so this is face cam.
Oh, wow. You got to really turn around.
Yeah, look off, look down, really. We'll look at the Kuhu Ice River. And this is interesting, the seventh grade teacher has a unit coming up that talks about Mount Everest and climbing Mount Everest, scaling it, and we're going to use this as an anticipatory set to give them an idea of what it was like. Because we have this idea, oh, Mount Everest, yeah, it's a really high mountain, it's cold, but when you look at this and you realize there is nothing else there.
Nothing there, yeah.
It gives you a different understanding and perspective of the information. Okay? So climbing Everest. Now, all of these ones are static experiences. We do have the cardboard app... We do have the cardboard app which allows you to have more virtual immersive experiences as well, interactive. I love seeing the smiley faces. And over here, it's amazing. Can you see that? Everybody looking around. It's so fun. Okay?
That's everybody bottom?
Yes.
Yeah, that's where everybody's looking. Gokio Valley and Lakes. And this is the Gozumba Glacier, which you can see how this glacier cut in half as it moved through the countryside, just below this highest mountain in the world. As temperatures warm, this and other glaciers show signs of shrinking. So then you can have a talk about global warming and the impact of that. Okay? So helicopters.
That's great.
But you can zoom in.
One of the questions is, "Would you ride a helicopter in the Himalayas?". So you could ask your students this. Why or why not?
It's an A3.
Okay? You flip around. And you can talk about what they're bringing in those jugs. Hypoththesize on that, the importance of it. Let's see what else we have. Okay, last one for Everest is Edmund Hillary Suspension Bridge. Do we know what this is? You want information on it? Sure you do. Sir Edmund Hillary was a New Zealand mountaineer who along with Sherpa Tenzing-Norgay became the first documented climbers to summit Everest on May 29, 1953 during expedition sponsored by the British government. Following this historic ascent, Hillary devoted most of his life to helping the Sherpas through an organization he founded called the Himalayan Trust. The trust built many schools and hospitals for the people of Nepal. As you can see here, Hillary's trust built bridges too. Would you guys dare cross that bridge?
No. Absolutely.
I'd rather cross it.
Okay? Isn't that amazing though?
That is.
Yes, sir. Any further questions? Answer please. Oh, I'm so sorry. Yes.
Do you want to see a 3D?
No, it's okay.
I'll share again.
Yeah, it's just a suspension. The last time I was on a suspension bridge. Oh my goodness.
So now, the people watching at home, are they watching us or are they seeing this as well?
You wanna see what they're seeing?
If they're watching us, I apologize.
They're seeing this. Ooh!
I was afraid of that.
They're seeing this.
Well, I apologize. That's right. Well, that is amazing.
Now, how many do we have? Like, how many of these can go into the classroom?
The kit?
Yeah.
Comes with 20. And this is what it gets carted around in, this heavy duty cart right here. It stores everything in here. So we have 20 VR headsets, which is about a classroom size. We ran into one incident where, you know, you had to buddy up.
Okay.
Just one or two kids had to buddy up. I believe we are looking at purchasing one for each of the schools because they're being utilized in this school. The two different schools are kind of in a tug of war of, "Well, I got that next, I wanna use it".
Right. Yeah, it's amazing. That's really neat.
That's one of my favorite things to share. So thank you for the opportunity. I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, man.
Anytime.
Gracely, don't it?
I'll do it at the end. You're fine. Just close it and it should be fine. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Think about how the headset's transformed already.
I don't wanna go back.
Be like a tropical.
Oh yeah. That'd be nice. All right. So we are at additions to the agenda. There was none, right? Okay. The consent agenda. Does anybody wish to pull anything from the consent agenda? Have any questions?
Move it as is.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed? Okay. Let me get... I gotta get my eyes a minute to a job. Okay, so we are up to new business. 9A, yes. Accept independent auditor's report.
I'm over.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And we have 9B, the approved correction action plan. If everyone is...
Motion approved.
Second.
I'll share it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay. And now we are up to 9C, the curriculum instructor consultant and stipend. This is with Dr. Reed Leven. She has agreed to stay on and help us as a consultant to follow up the things and...
And grants.
And grants. We appreciate that.
Federal grants and focus.
I'm over. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Donations. We have received so many donations this month. I find it amazing. I just want to take a moment to read them and recognize what we received. $4,000 from Stanley Black &amp; Decker to the Rick Engelhardt Memorial Scholarship. $161 from the United Presbyterian Church to the Townsend School for the Anti-Bullying Program. $25 from CNC Feeds to the Travel Club. $300 from Gearhart and... Or Coughlin &amp; Gearhart LLP to the Speech and Debate Forensic Club. $50 from Jeffrey Endress and Darlene Wolenberg to the Cody Endress Scholarship Fund. Approximately $40 Animal Kingdom and Jaco Stowe encyclopedias from an anonymous donor to use as art projects or other classroom uses, which I think that's pretty neat. And $420 from the Michelle McNaw Memorial Fund to the Middle School Magical Creatures Drawing Programs. I think that is amazing. So do we have a motion to accept the donations?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Here. Okay. 9E, we have the tax collector's report. And as I understand it, these were due to the state... Or I'm sorry, the county. But we can anticipate a revision to these. Okay.
We're still collecting. I guess deposits are still being made by the county.
Okay. So probably with the postmark date and everything, I think we're posting. And this had to be to the county by November 16th. So do we have a motion to approve the tax collector's report?
Move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, now we are up to our shared school business manager.
Want to talk a little bit about it? Yeah, sure. So tonight in front of you, as you know, I'm putting a recommendation in that we share the business, school business manager with Downsville, who's Tim McGuire, has 15 years of experience. I think we all know Tim. Children have gone through school. Still has a child in 11th grade, so he lives in the community, very familiar with our school district. I met with Superintendent Evans and Mr. McGuire about a month ago to see if we could put something in place. They have agreed on it. So I'm hoping that you'll support the recommendation. If so, it will be starting effective immediately. So I think he'd be a great school business manager and I'm hoping that you'll support it.
Motion approved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Great. So, yep. It's nice to be able to get right... Somebody right back into the position. So, that's good. Okay. And then we have 9G. This was an emergency appointment and approval. This is for the special education position.
Right. So that position's been open since July 1st. We've had a hard time filling the position. Luckily, we have a staff member here that is certified in special education. So she has accepted the position. So we're very lucky to have her.
Do we have a motion?
Move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay. And then we have personnel appointments. This is going to cover mentor.
A mentor for the new teacher.
For the new teacher, yep. And then we also have, it'll be necessary to appoint the new school business manager to the various roles.
Right.
And then, I think these are all lumped together, right? Yes. Building level emergency response plans. The way I understand this, this is a need to have three individual incident command teams rather than just two in the past.
Correct.
So do anybody have any questions on that? Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Okay, and we... Are we holding off on the policies?
No.
We have two. We have two, okay.
I'm just going to change.
Yeah.
Removing.
We'll be removing... Going to policy.
Yep.
We'll be removing policy 8505 on us, lunch meals.
Okay.
But the other two policies, we'll be looking to... Go ahead. Grayden, if you'd like to talk on the executive session policy.
Our executive session policy, you guys received, 9322. It also cites a Code of Ethics policy, which is our policy 9010 that Paul's going to discuss in a second. Excuse me, we had a couple changes to that. We wanted to make an amendment for the first reading. The first amendment would be where it says a board may not take action into executive session except for to vote on disciplinary charges against a tenured teacher at these sessions unless otherwise provided by law.
Okay.
And we'd like to add that because if the law does change in the future, we really don't want to redo a policy just based on one sentence.
Okay.
So it would include any kind of legal changes in the future moving forward. And also underneath that, we wanted to delete individual board members' statement and add in for clarification that ties it back to the Code of Ethics. We'd like to insert the paragraph on confidential information. It reads, "A board member, officer, employee shall not disclose confidential information acquired by him or her in the course of his or her official duties or use such information to further his or her personal interest. This includes matters discussed in executive session. However, the board acting as a whole may decide to disclose such information where disclosure is not prohibited under the law." So we'd like to add that confidential piece and delete the individual board member acting on their own shall not disclose matters discussed in executive session. We felt that this would more capture the role of an executive session and if we invited staff and anyone else into the executive session, it would tie them back into our Code of Ethics policy. So we'd like to have those changes for our first reading and then Paul's gonna elaborate on our Code of Ethics.
All right. Policy 9010, again, Code of Ethics, it was referenced in the other one. No material changes. There was only one small formatting change and that was to put the numeral 2 ahead of confidential information. That was omitted. So it went from 1 to 3 without the number 2. But other than that, we like the policy as written.
Okay. Are there any questions?
Can Mr. Dutcher share his notes with me?
Sure.
Thank you.
Why, do I talk fast?
Okay. So if we have a motion to approve these as the first reading as amended, policy, only policy 9010 and 9322, you have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second. Can it come out of the committee?
Yes.
Okay, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All carried. All right, we are up to administrative remarks. Director of Curriculum.
Go ahead. Thank you. Just a couple of things. First of all, I want to thank all of you for the opportunity to provide in the air. Walton, new member, board members as well. The faculty here have been amazing to me. I'm not gonna get too emotional, I wasn't worried about this. But really to thank you and I appreciate the work you've done here as well. And I will continue to do to make sure our grants are where they're supposed to be. We do have quarterly reports that I do need to maintain up through February and those will be done as they're supposed to be. And concerning the focus grant, it was officially approved. So that money is over $122,000 to be used for professional development for our teachers, for our summer workshops that will continue. And if you have your new director of curriculum, make sure they're in line with that. And also it helps to pay for our SRIs, which is our reading assessment that we do for grades five now, all the way up through the high school quarterly so that we get, you know, can gauge where students are in terms of their letter Cs. And we have some internal benchmarking that we're using. So it will fund that as well and other professional development opportunities for our staff. So it was nice to get the final approval for that. So that money, again, will help to support that throughout the year, not just in the summer. So teachers have many opportunities to do that. So I was really happy that that came through. And of course, I had to do a final newsletter. From the district, includes a lot of photos and some teacher highlights and upcoming professional development and working with technology departments. Everest has been a wonderful help in providing PD and technology to some of the things that you're looking at tonight and trying to incur into our teachers, take advantage of that because it can be paid for that through a grant. So, final newsletter edition for you, hi, all the presses today, to get that out. And there should be a copy for each of you and one for you as well, Mr. Clough, which is the chief of file as well. So again, thank you so much. And again, you'll be hearing from me, maybe not seeing me physically here at meetings. Again, thank you all so very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. We appreciate everything that you have done, the hard work that you have put into our district and the dedication that you have put into this. We appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you.
Take some water, Greg.
Leave us all over.
You know, I just want to echo, so this is my fifth year as your superintendent. And when I was being interviewed, and Butch and Rhonda, you remember this, they asked me, they asked me about the middle school principal and the curriculum person, which one, you know, which one would you go forth with? I said, we really need the curriculum person in order to get our house in order. And it was, if you remember, the budget was passed by one vote. We were lucky enough to interview Michelle and hired her, and I would tell you, she came in with, it was sort of a blank slate, and she worked very hard. We met several times, our admin team met several times, and that's happened for three years straight. You know, Michelle and I have met several times during the day, our administrative team, she's been a big piece of this. But, you know, I always say, when you leave a position, you try to leave it in a better place than what it was. And we're definitely in a great shape because of the work that she's done. So, you know, I appreciate the board supporting that position because it's a very, very important position, and without that position, you know, the strides that we've made in the last five years probably wouldn't happen, so. She's done a great job. I told her she's off to, back to her home school. I think she, I talked to her superintendent, her new boss, which was her old boss, but they're very excited about having her there, and she's going to be a huge asset at her new district, so. But, Michelle, for me, and I know the admin team, thank you so much. We're going to miss you. But I'll be seeing you anyways for the next three months. So we already have meetings set up, so we can discuss this. So this is my last goodbye to work, but I just wanted the board to know, we appreciate it in the public.
Yes, thank you. Okay. Well, be superintendent remarks.
So, I wanted just to start, and I appreciate you including the administrative team into your board goals. We've met several times on your goals. We just met on Monday, and we spent a lot of time talking about board goals with Kyle. I think the administrative team came up with a lot of unique things. Kyle was very, very impressed, surprised, with some of the items that the administrative team put forth. So that's why we've asked for a delay, and plus Kyle, with all that information, he's not going to be able to get it back to us anyways. But your administrative team did a great job on Monday putting forth that to help you look through those goals. So I think it's going to, it's going to give us a clear picture, and we've set, we've actually set, you know, months and dates and years, so that you can actually see, you know, what we envision and where we want to go with it. So, once those are all out, we'll bring those back to you, so. The next thing I wanted to talk to you about was Broom Community College. I brought the idea of the college, bringing our students to the college last year. We're going to continue to have a great partnership with Broom Community College. We have, we've added a lot of college courses. The sophomore class will be taking a trip to Broom Community College like they did last year, to visit the campus, to have lunch there, to talk to professors and students. And if anything, it's a great thing anyways, that we can get kids to actually see the college campus. One of the things that I wanted to bring to your attention was, Delhi, right now, a student that goes there pays $106 for three credits. That will end starting in January, and it isn't because of Delhi, it's because of the higher education law that they can't allow any, they got to charge the same tuition as they would for any student. So their cost is going up to $1,100, which is going to be quite a bit of money that they'll have to pay. So some of the things with Delhi is they don't guarantee the class, so if a student wants to get into a specific class, they can't do that. And it's, it's going to, you know, the cost of that will be maybe prohibited on some of the students. Right now, we have three students that are going to Delhi. So one of the things that I don't, I'm just putting this out there so you can think about it, is looking at that Broom program once again, for a student to take a three-credit course there, it's $550, which is, which is a lot cheaper than Delhi. They're guaranteed a seat in the class, whatever class that they want to get into. So it's just an idea that I just want you to start thinking about, seeing, you know, whether it's a transportation cost that we can transport them there, or, you know, we talked about last year about paying the tuition cost. But those are just some of the ideas that I'll bring back to you during budget time. And I've talked to Mr. Knuski about it, the guidance counselors, and we're having many conversations about it. Broom is always very open and welcome, and I think you've talked to Katie Bucci many times.
Yes.
About it. So, that's just, I'm just putting that out there right now, for a conversation later when we get into budget talks, so I'll keep you updated on that.
So maybe that's something in the budget talks that we can discuss, not just, not getting, or ending the relationship with Delhi.
Right.
But keeping Delhi.
Yes.
And also picking up ACC.
So I wanted to put that both on the table, and you knew the cost and everything in it, so.
So what are the impacts of the three students that are going to Delhi now? When is that, when's that going to end?
Uh, January 1st is when the cost goes up.
So what's that going to impact, the three that we have going?
Almost 600?
Yeah.
Almost 600.
No, it's going to be, it's going to be more, it's going to be like a thousand, thousand bucks, $980. It's going to be close to 1,000.
Yeah. So, and we already have them, those students are already enrolled there and currently taking classes there.
They are.
So what are their options if they can't afford to do that?
I, I don't think any of them have said that they're not going to, right?
No.
I think they're going to continue.
Their options are to try and pick up any college credit courses that we do offer here, fast forward. But again, it's not the same experience as would be if it's going to a campus.
So they might, so they're looking at, the fast-forward programs through, run through Broom Community College, which are free, these are free classes that we offer here with our partnership with Broom. So they're looking at maybe taking the courses here, which wouldn't cost them anything. But it is a difference, the experience would be different because they wouldn't be able to go on to campus, you know, they'd be taking them here at Walton.
Are the three students seniors?
I believe, no, I think they are all three seniors, yes.
So you're, they have one semester worth of...
And we have, next semester, we have three students, again, two of the same, one is not, and then we have one that is picking up, I believe, so I think we're at three again.
So they were, they actually told us that the increase was going up, and then we had to call the college and say, what's going on?
Yeah.
Until it came from, from higher ed.
And they've been, they've been not following the guidelines, I guess, for a few years, trying to benefit kids. Now they're in a position where they're forced to follow those guidelines.
So what's plan B for students that are enrolled and the ones that are upcoming? If they're on that advanced pace, what are we going to do?
And that's the thing. We already sat down, you know, with Mr. Preston and Mr. Albertson, and we based their schedule for the entire year, because we scheduled it all year, and we're semesters like they are, we've got to go, go to plan B and look at some of the courses that they can, they can pick up here. We do have options here, that's not saying we don't. We have fast-forward courses, we have continuity, where kids can do self-paced, even college credit courses.
And I know one of the students, they're going to go anywhere, regardless of the costs they're going.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we're being fair across the boards, that's all. You know, if they started on a fast-forward program, and then all of a sudden, the foundation falls off underneath of this, you know.
Well, and we personally called Delhi ourselves.
I'm sure.
And they're, and they're, they said they were working on some kind of, or meeting that day.
Right. So they're still working on trying to lower the cost, but I don't, we looked at the regs and everything, it's still, it's there. I don't know how, unless they give like a tuition or a scholarship of some sort, which maybe that's, that's the road that they're going down, so.
So I have a question for you. How is Broom able to do it?
Because Broom is a community college, it's not a SUNY, so they have different rules and regulations, that's why they're allowed to.
And I had, you know, when, we had talked before, I had said, you know, maybe there's grants out there, something that, you know, especially with the kids that are seniors, you know, let them follow through with it.
Right.
And we just had a little more lead time, they didn't really get information until the end of October.
Right.
For the next semester in the world of academia, that's, that's not much time, it's probably not.
And it's affecting, it's not just here, I mean, it's affecting all the, all the high schools in New York State that go to two-year school.
Potential juniors that would be going in next year, so I mean, they're, we're just going to make sure, you guys are going to make sure you're really clear on our options that are on the table after the next budget, so.
Absolutely. That's why I wanted to bring this to you.
I just want to make sure, I just want to make sure there's a very clear plan B as to how it can be go forward, that's all.
Yep. Any questions on that? So I'll keep, we'll keep you updated on it, keep you posted. I just wanted to remind you, and I know I've told you this in my newsletters, about the parent-teacher conferences start this Friday, and then when we return after Thanksgiving break, it's that Monday for the whole district, and then that December 1st is for elementary school. And just a reminder, because we've had parents call about why we're not doing those evening events, and we have explained to them that we can't do the half-days anymore, that we have to do the 180 days, you can't do half-days before a holiday. You've heard me say this before, but unfortunately, that's something that, that happened because of state ed, and I think our governor was involved in it, but. And he also saw, I gave you information, I did put information to the 180-day calendar committee at SED about our concerns specifically in rural school district, and some of the administrators also gave me some information that I submitted to the committee. They're supposed to come out with some new results in December, some recommendations, so hopefully that'll change, so. The last thing I just wanted to talk to you about was the tree lighting, the Christmas tree lighting. So we have the high school yearbook, the high school yearbook group, the high school student council, the middle school council, FFA and FBLA, all donated. They bought lights and a big star and electrical to light the tree. We decided that we're going to do the tree here at the district. It'll be over by the pavilion. There were some concerns with the town and the tree being where it's going to be. So actually, we met, we have a great plan, we met with the groups, and we're going to make it really a big festival night. We're going to kick it off after the Townsend Holiday Concert, Christmas Concert. And we're going to have cookies at home, Home &amp; Career's going to make hot chocolate. We're going to have some dress-up Charles Dickinson carols, and Mr. Knuski said he's going to dress up with a big top hat and gloves. We've got other surprises that are going to happen, but it won't be the same night as the parade, so we, so one interview.
Putting a base in to put the tree down into, or?
We're going to, yes, that, that was what we originally planned to do.
And I think that was one of the concerns that the town had, was the size of the tree and to secure it safely, so.
Right.
As, you know, that same concern coming here, how are we going to make sure that that's secured? Because this is a 30-foot?
No, it'll probably, it'll probably, once we, once you trim it, once you, so I'm not a tree expert.
Neither am I, that's why. Are you going to get out your pruning?
And maybe Butch, yeah, so the plan is, in case we have a conversation, is to have the hole, and then we're going to cement it.
What we're talking about doing, Niles has got a 12-inch iron pipe that's five foot long, putting a plate, a plate on the bottom, and then dig it, set it down in, pour concrete around it. Now, how many yards it's going to take, I don't know, but like I say, that, it'd be nice, it would've been better if we could've done it earlier, so I had time to settle around, but now we don't, so that's why you're better off to just, when you dig it, get rid of the dirt, fill it right full of concrete, and that'll set up.
Okay.
And you might still want to put a couple cables from the tree down to the ground just to support it.
Right.
I mean, what they're talking about doing, the last I heard, what John was saying, is taking all the branches off so that when you set the tree down in, it goes all the way down into the pipe.
Right.
And then put braces or, you know, blocks on the inside to, you know, say if it's only a 10-inch tree and you've got a 12-inch hole, you have to put some wedges or stuff down to hold it and try to support it as much as we can. And then, when they pull it out, you know, after Christmas is done, or after the holidays, putting a plate over top and have that bolted down so kids don't throw rocks down in it and fill it up. So, or that's what we were talking about for down there, and I didn't know if we're doing the same up here or what. The other, the other option, well, for this year, there wouldn't be, but like I say, it'd be better, almost better to have one of these outfits come in that push down in and pick the whole ball up and come over and plant it.
That's all right.
Well, it'd be nice to do that, but you've got to do that during the summer, or spring or summer, so that it gets time enough to grow in.
Right.
Right, and that's what, like after, you know, hearing the town conversation, then coming here, obviously, a root-bound tree would be much more secure, safer, more permanent type of thing, but, you know, you said you checked with the insurance company and...
So we're covered on that, we're covered for volunteers who wanted to assist, like, that's why we checked on Butch, so we're covered on that.
Now...
Just from a logistics standpoint, there's a, I mean, from an engineering standpoint, I think what a great lesson you could work with the kids to say, what are all the engineering forces involved in actually setting a tree and holding it up? One of the concerns I would have is a racking load on it. We design stuff for wind load speeds, like when a, when a wind actually hits it, you realize that's like four tons of tree in the air. When you hit it with a wind load, the rat, that actual load is what keeps it from toppling over, so it'd probably be a great project to do diligence and say what those forces are to make sure that you're, you have something in the ground stable. I just, I just would hate to sit here and say, you had the availability to do engineering on this, it's a public entity, you have people in the community involved, they're going to be exposed to it, God forbid you have a wind burst and nobody did the engineering behind it. I just, that's the only, that's the only part from my engineering side of things where I look at things differently, probably, but that's my only concern I would have on that. I think it's a great public outreach, I think it's a great community thing. The fact that the students are lighting the tree and they're calculating all that stuff, that's great. How are you going to put the lights on the tree is another logistical challenge, because you're going to have to have lifts. Are they subject to OSHA? Do the people have to be certified to be in the lifts? Can you have the kids in the lifts? It's just a lot, a lot of questions.
Yeah, so the lift's going to come from, John's got that, he's going to borrow it from the fairgrounds. They're going to put the lights up, we're covered with that, insurance-wise as well. It's one of our employees that will be doing that.
Okay. Now, so the lights are actually going to be done by adults?
Yeah, the kids aren't doing, no, it's going to be, no, it'll be John, and we have a couple of our workers that are going to volunteer to do it.
Like I say, if somebody's thinking that, you know, he put a five-foot pipe in the ground, and as you say, depending on just how tall the tree is, it does have a, you know, tendency that the wind comes along pushing it. You could put some cables into it, which is going to restrict it a little bit. Is it going to be the best way? We don't know. But like I say, put a few cables, or put three or four cables around it, plus being down in the ground, it'd be different if you, as I say, if you had the thing put in, you know, a month ago or so, so the ground had a chance to start hardening back up. Off a late year to, you know, to get it even buttoned, tacked around it, it's still a guessing game.
Well, it's, is the conkey, conkey?
Yeah, that stuff.
Concrete going to cure?
Yes.
Wouldn't it, that, at this temperature? Well, I think it's freezing, but...
As long as it doesn't get, it's not real cold at night.
You can butt the additive in it if, you know.
And cover it. Is this, I guess my thing is location for using concrete needs to be a permanent location, because that's a pretty big block of concrete to dig back out.
Well, I mean, but do we even know? The challenge I have is you're asking for something that you don't know, you don't know what those loading forces are, right? Unless somebody calculates and puts their name on it with a stamp, we don't even know what we're discussing. Is it five yards of concrete, is it 100 yards of concrete to keep it from overturning? What's it designed for? If you, if you decorate an existing tree and it blows over in the same fashion, it's an act of God. If you put the tree up and it blows over, it's no longer an act of God.
It's a liability right now.
And I hate to think like that, because I think it's such a great, wonderful thing, but I, I would like it if somebody could actually say, here's the forces you have to overcome, so you can answer that. And then you can say, we have a permanent setup from here to whenever, and this setup is, got approval on it based on these engineering forces, it's acceptable, and somebody has signed off on it. I really think that that's your doing your diligence. I'm only one opinion, but, let me, you know some engineers, I think.
Might be able to check on that, too. The other thought that I'm having, which is I'm hearing what you're saying and agreeing with that, would be instead of digging it by bucket, and would be to drill it, because it'd auger it.
The only trouble with augering it with the, I think that you've got quite a lot of gravel, it's going to be hard to keep it cleaned out enough to put your thing back down in. And I'm not saying you have to go concrete. Like I say, if, if you were doing it during the summer, augering it down, put the pipe in and, you know, pack the stuff down and give it time, you'll water it and all this and that, get it to settle in, you could do it without doing the concrete, but, you know, at this late time, you know, that's why on the bottom of it, they, you know, like I say, I've got a plate that's 30 inches by, I think, five foot. You weld, put the pipe in the middle of that, and weld it to it, and the only thing you'd want to do is put a hole in the center, so that if any water does get in there, it has a way out. And then when you put, at least, there's a four-yard minimum pour, you're going to pay for four yards, whether you take one yard or four yards. So that's why I figured, you know, you almost got to figure out, you know, can you use four yards, or can you get away with two yards?
Like a Christmas tree, you know your Christmas tree bases look like with the sidebars out? They're out there for a reason, for stability. So other, other options you could have is actually I-beams and cross patterns with that same plate fast into it, to overcome those racking loads. I think it's a great teaching opportunity for kids. I know we're on a crushed deadline for this thing, but if you could actually teach the physics behind that and say, here's what you have to overcome to a long-term project, and we get somebody to sign off on it, I think everybody's got a comfort level to move forward with it, at least.
And your date was December?
December 6.
6?
And it's not, this isn't like a 100-foot tree, this is, it's going to be like a 20, it'll probably be like 20 feet, that's what the tree will be.
Okay.
20 feet's a lot better than, before he was talking 35 to 40.
And that's, and that's half the size of Rockefeller Center, which is why I was going...
And not only that, you also have the problem of picking the branches, so you've got to have straps that you carefully let it down, and then you've got to pick it up and, you know, put it on some type of a trailer. That's why nobody has really come out, you know, he just said that Tracy's got one up there, Tracy Kellogg's got a tree up there they could get, and like I say, what height they're playing with.
But we still don't know if the tree is going to come back as a whole tree or it's going to be missing half the side from laying it down.
Like I say, you've got to just have some straps to, you know, I mean, you can still pick it up with a log picker or something if they've got somebody lined. I don't know what John's lined up.
But a 20-foot tree is a different risk level to me than a 30 or 40-foot.
Well, yeah, I don't, we, because I think the word Rockefeller tree came out, so everybody was thinking it's going to be a 60-foot tree.
Well, I said Rockefeller because it's 75-foot, and if we're talking 30, 35 feet...
So, the tree itself, I mean, when we went out, I would say it was maybe 30 feet, and by the time they trim it and cut it and get it, it's going to be probably approximately 20, I'm thinking like 20 feet once we bury it.
And you're talking 12-inch pipes, right, what he's got?
He's got a 12-inch steel pipe.
So by the time you take a 12-inch base, on a spruce or something like that, you...
Well, according to what John was saying, the base of it was not, you know, was smaller than a 12-inch. But like I say, if you go a 12-inch pipe, that should give you, for next year or the year down the road, you know, down the road, gives you a little bit of flexibility. I mean, there's the one he's, you know, that they've picked out, I haven't seen it. Is it 10 inches, is it eight inches? Too many unknowns. I mean, I didn't go, Roger, did you look at it?
Yeah, it wasn't, it's not, yeah, I would say the base is like that, it's not like...
And then also, as you cut off the bottom branches, you, you know, the farther you go, you're getting smaller. I mean, worst-case scenario, if it's a little bit big on the bottom, you have to take a saw and trim it down.
So I guess the question is, and I understand what you're saying, Grayden, and I think that was the town's concern about it at Veterans Plaza. How much comfort level do we have saying yes to this tree being placed as a temporary structure versus a waiting until a root-bound tree can be planted, you know, root into the ground, be a safe structure, and then go from there?
To me, I think one of the things we could do with this tree is set the tree, and then kind of scenes, believe them. Set the tree in a way, like I say, you're going to have to use a strap of some sort so you don't destroy the tree to set it. Means you're going to be hooked onto the top of it, or very reasonable to it. You could put some load against it with the hydraulics that you're picking it with, and that will give you some indication on just what it is.
But then you cut a 30-foot tree, you transported it down, you got a decent amount of time into it, plus, you know, I don't know.
What are you going to say, what?
Like I said, they're, they're probably going to have to use a log picker with straps. But like I say, do they, I mean, when they move the Rockefeller tree, they, you know, they usually have two or three cranes already lined up.
So I just, my personal opinion, from this standpoint, just because we're a public entity, I just want to make sure we're doing our diligence. That's all I care about. I love the spirit of it. I think it's a great community activity, but if we don't do our diligence, what are we sitting here for, you know? It's an activity, I think it's numbers, it can be done in a couple hours.
So is there, is there someone that we can contact that would have that ability to do that? And if so, what made a potential fee be?
Maybe we can get somebody to donate this listing at home.
I don't know.
Let me ask, do I work? I don't know.
Between Kevin and I, there's a few engineers.
We've got a few people that are...
But I think it'd be a great teaching opportunity for the kids, too, to say, you know, this is what this is designed for.
Calling up.
Right, you would think a simple tree, you know.
Like I say, you could put...
But there's a huge liability attached to that.
Chain of irons, you know, there's different options. I mean, with this, though, putting the plate down, we just thought that if you put a plate down and it's flat, laying on the ground, you put concrete on top, in order to tip, it's got to, you know, it's got to tip a lot. And like I say, you know, it's a guessing game on how many yards of concrete you're going to get.
And that's a factor of what the loads are on it. So I think if we, if we did that, I'd definitely be in favor of it. It's just a matter of doing that homework.
My gut tells me that you're playing with a plate and the concrete would not be an issue because of the fact, and one of the things with us for rail, for example, our guide rail, we bury basically, it's a three-foot cube, and eight bolts on the top of it, and when somebody hits that rail, it doesn't pull that out of the ground. I mean, and the actual rail stretches, it doesn't. So that is something that is, the top of it is at the ground. And so if you pour four yards of concrete, you are pouring several thousand pounds around it.
And like I say, it was just...
And get it pulled up out of the earth, which is a force in itself, I mean, so I think you would be...
And like I say, how many yards, it's still a guessing game. I mean, until you get it dug open and see, you know.
And this is a temporary...
How much it caves in and how much this and that, you know, I mean...
A three-by-five plate, basically, right?
There's, I got a 30-inch by five-foot plate, but like I say, if that's not big enough, we go some different.
I'm just saying, 30-inch by five-foot, if you set that, you want to go five feet in the ground, you've got to be in perfect soil to dig vertically. So you're already talking a four-by-six, I mean, so you're probably actually talking on the surface closer to an eight-by-eight hole, if you have very good ground and it stays stable.
An eight-by-eight?
Yes, to put a plate like that five feet in the ground, yes. So you are talking a substantial load of concrete going around that thing once you dash it.
And then, then... 25 yards of concrete for that hole, if you did it just sheer concrete. Now, that's going to overcome all the forces the tree's going to put together, but who's going to buy 25 yards of concrete? So there's a, there's a give and take in that whole formula. I'm just saying that if we just did that, then we can answer Butch, which is how much concrete goes in this thing, based on weight, because you're using a ballast to overcome those forces of racking, you need this many yards minimum. It's, I mean, it's, it's simple math, it's just somebody's got to do it and say, yes, this is the answer.
Okay, so there's two, two weeks before the concert with Thanksgiving in there. Is that something that either one of you think that you can contact a person to see what their thoughts are?
I think we can have an answer by Friday. We'll look to have an answer tomorrow.
And also, you got to look at, with Thanksgiving coming up, not everybody's going to be around.
And I know time is, so I'll get on the phone tomorrow.
I mean, I've got no problem bringing it back up and digging the hole, but like I say, we may have to dig it and put fence around it and leave it open until we can, you know, get more of an idea. You aren't going to know how big the hole is actually going to be. Down on the bottom, yes, all right, you need a 30-inch by five-foot, that's not a problem. But to get down there and get that, how wide are you going to go?
So if we're, but isn't the idea, I know we have two solutions here, one being a tree in a, you know, in basically a stand that goes in annually, the other being more of a permanent solution where we bury a root ball, well, the tree with a root-bound tree and have it stand the test of time. If we pour all that concrete and everything, aren't we committing to going to cutting a tree annually and putting it in?
And based on the first year's experience, you may never want to do it again, depending on how it works out.
Well, the other thing is, too, is to check that, and I said, the point is, talking about and thinking about it, the more numbers start to calculate in the head of just what this is, you may get away with that with the material instead of being concrete. Your bag fill and compact, like a pressure run or something like that, you can make that stuff very hard and very sustainable, and that's something that could be dug back out and used elsewhere, or topsoil, put back over it and you seed it, and it becomes lawn and you plant a permanent tree. I'm just, my other flip to this is, the students have already gotten, there is an expectation there, and I don't want to be cutting them off at the knees once we've started this out. I don't want to break the bank chasing this out, but I think we've got something under motion to do our due diligence in keeping it under motion, but kind of keeping it...
And I agree with that, but the lights that you have, you said are commercial brand?
Yes, they ordered a commercial brand, and you have a huge, you have a big star, everything's, I mean, they're LED, so they would, they would last for years and years and years and years, right?
So we really want to, too bad we didn't have more time to think this out, because you really want to know, is that a permanent spot or down front a permanent spot? Where may a permanent spot be so at the, the concert times that that can be celebrated? Is there a chance that a smaller tree could be temporarily used this year?
Well...
To move forward, you know, with the students and everything, and, you know, the, the plan, but until a decided spot is located? Because I'm thinking that's a lot of concrete to go in an area.
That's just the numbers on that, you don't have to use that. You've just got to figure out what the forces you have to overcome. As your temporary solution of setting a tree there, maybe for the first five years, but come up with a permanent solution for where you want to plant one, so that in five years you can fade out of that process and jump into the other one. If those materials are already bought, I mean, it, there's been decisions made prior to even coming to this table where they already have all this in motion, they already have all the materials and stuff, how do you, how do you say no to that, you know what I mean? So just let's do our diligence and make sure that we have alternatives moving forward. If an alternative's long-term tree grows, you need five years to get that growth, 10 years, then we know this alternative's got to be in place for five or 10 years. But I, just as long as you have the numbers that prove out and you can do it, most do it.
So if it's agreeable with the board, why don't we chase things tomorrow, and then we'll be in touch with everybody?
On Friday?
Hopefully tomorrow, I just, I want to leave a little...
Just get in touch with me, so I can talk to the kids. And I, you know, I just, I'll just, and I understand everybody's concern, but, you know, the kids, remember, and I always tell you guys, we're here for kids, it's going to be a really nice event, I get the safety issue, I get it, and let's not...
Yeah, I don't want to make a mountain out of a...
But you have to make sure it's secure.
So we can...
Because, you know, even though when school's in session, you know, that is being supervised, but, you know, when we're not here in holiday break, you know, Thanksgiving and stuff, you know, there's not much control over who's going to be around it, so, especially if an open hole has to be there for, until we can get a delivery of concrete.
But I'd say as far as an open hole, it'd be only open for overnight or something like that. It's not like you're going to dig it and leave it open for weeks and weeks, because, you know, we don't have the time to play with.
No, exactly, and hopefully we can have a...
Yep. Okay, so let's, let's do that. If you can reach out to someone and make contact, and then Roger can possibly reach out to people as well. Get a couple opinions, and then if everybody...
The worse comes the worst, we'll take all those lights and we'll decorate the outside of the school.
Well, I mean, I guess it gets back to the whole point of this, is what, actually, what was the plan? I mean, we got here tonight, we're like, we're going to put a tree in the ground, but they bought the lights and stuff based on something. I mean, there must've been a lot of planning ahead of this whole thing, and this must be option B, because that option A was at the town, so...
Right.
That was the plan. So the original plan was to bring the tree, and, you know, I had to talk with some town people, said okay, and then, so the student body went ahead, bought the lights and everything, getting ready, so...
So you talked to the town board, and the town board said okay?
Well, it was presented to the town board last night, but the same type of discussion took place. And then it became, you know, okay, now it's becoming a liability, how safe can we guarantee that that tree's going to be as a town?
Right.
That it's not going to fall over on, you know, anyone. So that's when the town had said, okay, you know, let's not do that big of a tree, we can do a much smaller tree, or use the tree that is root-bound, that's there right now. You know, yes, it's decorated with red, white, and blue, but that could come off or unplugged, you know, for the time being. But then I found out how big the bulbs and the star are, so that's what brings us here. And this is plan B, so...
For these calculations, the only thing we're going to need to know of the exact size of it, obviously, and then we'd have to have a range for the ones going forward, but you'd need the size of it, the base, things like that, to make those calculations. So somebody's got to give us that information to be able to deal with that tomorrow.
And how small of a tree do you think you can get away with without the light bulbs looking ridiculous?
Close to the bottom, you cut some more, the bottom off, lower down.
20, okay. So it sounds like a 20-foot is minimum.
Tracy Kellogg has her lights. Tracy's donating.
So John, I'll ask John, and John can get all that information out. I'll ask him first thing in the morning.
We'll just go see Tracy's, say, which one is it?
Okay, so we'll wait to hear from you and see what you find out. Okay. Yes?
Hi, from a student perspective, how will students be involved? Because it seems like, I know, like, student groups donated money to have us put the place and buy the lights and everything, but how are we going to be able to decorate it? Because it seems like you have to have an adult with a lift, big lights and a star on, but like, the students, especially student council, would love to be involved in decorating and making this a Walton Central School tree.
And what I, the way I understand how the students may be involved is, the adults will do the top of the tree and the students will do the bottom of the tree, kind of like, because you can't go up on the lift, but you're right.
And there's 1,200 bulbs that have to be actually screwed in to the light, so it's going to take some time for kids to do.
That's all fair?
Yeah. And then the kids will be involved with, what are plans, the plans that you have with the chorus and the band, right?
Yeah, we, what we've got, yeah. So when we met today, we talked about, after the elementary school concert, which is a perfect kickoff, because this is where getting all the schools involved, the select chorus from Townsend, middle school, high school chorus, and just a couple of carols, student council, and other groups putting together free hot chocolate, Ms. Gupton's class cooking the cookies to give out, and then basically, and then turning the tree on, having it be an event that pulls all three schools in. And it does, it does exactly what we, what we're trying to do, is make the school the center of the community. So that would be nice. And it seems like sometimes, a lot of these things, and we brought this up specifically, the Townsend school sometimes, it's always about high school, middle school, and stuff like this, it's fun to have all three schools involved, plus the fact you're going to have so many parents and grandparents already here for the concert, because they all want to go to the elementary concert, so it's kind of a perfect storm.
And Romy, if you think of anything else, talk to Mr. Knuski, that you can help out.
Come see me tomorrow.
But you're right, it would be limited to the actual decorating of it because of the height and the requirements that we would have to abide by, not allowing students up on the, what do you call it, the lift, scissor lift or something like that? So, I think, okay, so we will, we'll leave it like that and wait to hear from you. You'll get ahold of Roger and then contact us.
The bucket truck, they're still going to have the kids holding on the bottom of the wire when they're going, when somebody's going up. So kids are going to be involved just as much as they do...
They just won't be able to get on the bucket truck.
They won't be able to get on the bucket truck, but somebody's got, an adult's up in the bucket truck, and they're moving it around, going around with it, it's got to be, and the kids are going to have to bring the lines, and then once you get down so far, they just take it around and around. I mean, the kids will be involved just as much as they want to be.
You're not taking that much wire up the truck. They try to keep it untangled.
Right. And I think the long-term goal would be to find a permanent location to make, you know, and then go from there. Yeah, yeah.[1677.12]